Welcome, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States of America-
And to republic, where it stands-
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start off this morning with Dan Burke, the new director of the Wayne County Public Health Department. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
What have you got for us today?
I've got quite a bit. Couple of decisions I were hoping to get votes on today, but I don't think we're quite prepared for votes yet. I'll pass along the information. The first thing I would like to bring to your attention is the cabinetry that I requested a few months ago. You guys asked for a secondary quote. I received that quote. You should have that quote in your packet. Should say $6,900 on that particular quote. And then I was able to get a quote yesterday from the original company, and I had them redesign it. I was able to drop that price down to over $1,000,000 from the 14-9. So those are two quotes we got. The one that is $9,800, I believe it is, somewhere in that range. That is the cabinetry that the clerk's office currently uses. That's where we got the idea from. They're documents. And those cabinets come completely assembled. There's no assembly to them and anything else that has warranties on them. The other cabinetry's, they would have to be redesigned, and they don't hold many doors as the $9,800 quote does. And there's also no assembly would be required for these other cabinetry's, and they did not put the freight charge in. They wouldn't give us that until we placed an order. I would assume that $6,900 would go up by at least $1,000 once you get the freight.
So I have two copies from Spectra Associates.
Yeah, so the original one I put in there was me estimating, I redesigned it and estimated the cost at like $9,575.
It's on the bad page.
It says $9,873.
So the first quote was $14,000 some odd dollars. You should have that packet.
I don't see that. Did you see that?
All I have is the one that says $9,873.
Did you give us the other one?
That's the one I just had requoted yesterday.
Also, the other one was last time, right?
Yes, and it's $14,000. I believe I sent it over.
Yeah, I've got the $14,000.
Yeah. So the original quote from Spectra was $14,000 some odd dollars.
Okay, so this is a new quote and a new specs.
And I only had the $14,000 one up until yesterday afternoon, when they finally sent me the new quote. That's why I had to hand it out on this morning.
So tell me about this other company, Dan. You don't have a final?
Southwest. Their quote was $6,900, and their design doesn't quite fit our fire retardant rooms, so it would have to be redesigned, which wouldn't change the cost much. But we have to put that together, and we have to pay for freight. And it's neither one of those prices including those quotes as far as the freight goes. I would assume this quote would go from $6,900 to approximately $7,900 once you get the freight involved. And the other quote includes assembly and the freight. We are asking as a department for the commissioners to consider approving the higher quote due to we know the company better, since the clerk's office advised them. And we actually get about 15 more storage spaces out of the morning.
Steve, any experience your department has had with assembly of stuff? I mean, it would take quite a bit of effort on our part to build them and-
Time is money, too, so I mean, I'm okay with the $9,873.
It's under your own budget, right?
Under your-
Correct. I actually brought, we would pay for the cabinets out of $1168 office supplies. We have $9,852 in that particular account.
$18 short.
Yeah. I'd find $19 somewhere else.
Steve is our expert on purchasing policy. Are we doing that close enough that we can make that finding that it's the most responsive? Yeah, best, most responsive.
More stories, less time involved.
Targetable compatibility would exist. It's still easy even though it's a separate department.
And we did search for a third quote. We just couldn't find a company that designed specific cabinetry.
Dollar amount, it's two or three. Two or three.
Cabinetry's office supplies, there's no speed.
With that being said, I'll make the motion that we approve the quote from Spectra for $9,873.
Second?
Motion and a second. And neither of these vendors is local, so there's no-
One's in Texas, one's in New York.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
So the next things I have at this point would be more informational. The United States Health Board meeting, I introduced the health officer's contract, the new health officer, potential health officer's contract to the board. They did approve it contingent on Dr. Bell's approval. And I later spoke to Dr. Bell's that day, and she was also in agreement with this particular contract. Just a matter of getting the signatures and bringing them back to the commissioners for final approval. I will meet with her next Monday. Signatures from her and Dr. Reiter next Monday.
Where are we at with malpractice insurance?
So in that discussion yesterday, she had some questions on the policy itself, based off Dr. Jettmore's old policy. I told her I couldn't answer that question. That would be more suited for the insurance company, so I connected those two, and they're in discussions now.
Okay.
The second one is the virgin's contract. The Health Board did approve it yesterday, and there was some hesitation as far as some of the wording in here when it comes to background checks. And I believe I forwarded those emails to the commissioners yesterday. They're gonna add that verbiage to the contract, and they will supply us any copies that we ask for. And we're also involved in the interview processes if we chose to do so. So once that gets changed, I'll be bringing it back to the commissioners for approval. I do want to take that back to the Health Board as well. And then one last thing I'm gonna ask. I don't have quotes or anything in front of me at this point in time. I'm still in the infancy of it. With the new health officer and a new nurse practitioner or physician assistant starting, I have to fill their office with furniture. So I have done some research for furniture. I'm able to buy two desks, two storage units, and a independent storage unit for under $700, all items. So that's something-
It's not Ikea.
Do I need to bring it back when I'm ready for that?
Don't let that box guard leave town, okay?
Steve, do we have any available? Maybe. You wanna check with Steve first to see if-
I need two desks, two filing cabinets, and then another filing cabinet that walks for the medical.
Let's look and see what we got first.
Okay. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Dan?
No. And I want to mention, too, our new deputy director of clinical services starts next Wednesday.
Great.
I believe she goes by Beth, but she'll start next Wednesday.
Congratulations on getting some of those positions filled.
We're getting closer. We're almost there.
You've done a great job over there. Keep it up.
Appreciate it.
As far as-
Thank you.
-we're going to contract with virgins, will we get the revised language?
Get the revised contract before we approve it.
Yeah. Chris has been working on it with their attorney. Chris Arnold has with Ron's office, so I'll get it out to everyone.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
Hi, Brandon.
Hello.
Come on up. You're not planning on spending more than $9,000, are you?
Hey, the first item I have before you today is a transfer request. Our Heine Road Bridge went to letting last week. We did see some favorable bids. They were about just under $200,000 less than the engineer's estimate, so that's always a good thing. Reviewing our funding availability with Endot, we currently have 1.1 million funding coming from Endot, which leaves the local match at $626,000 for this bridge. Endot is still working on seeing if there's additional funding that they can provide to make that a true 80-20 match, but I don't have that information at this time yet. So what I would like to do as part of my transfer request is to transfer $300,000 from our Bridge 712, Richmond Avenue. It is not going to letting in December like we originally anticipated, so there is some available appropriations there. And I'd like to transfer that into the Heine Road Bridge line item to cover the $626,000.
So that'll get you where you need to be?
Correct, yes. And that'll be, the $626 is the maximum amount that we would pay when we receive that invoice from Endot. So hopefully less, but-
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. And you will take that to council tonight?
Yes.
Okay, good.
If you have a party on the Heine Road Bridge on completion, I'd like to come.
I'll keep that in mind. The next item before you is our right-of-way contract for Bridge 511. That's Mulberry Street there in Cambridge City. We're ready to move forward with the right-of-way services. The total contract is for $27,030, but that is an 80-20 match with Endot. So our portion is only $5,406. And after reviewing the contract, it's reasonable to me. It's on the Endot boilerplate template, so try to throw on. I would recommend it for a group.
For approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for Bridge 511. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you for that. And the last item before you today, it doesn't require any action, more or less informational purposes. On our waterfall road project, there were some additional scope changes, trying to rework the alignment to kind of help with the site distance coming down the hill, and some other environmental considerations that we had to take into account when working with the city parks and stuff. They have brought to me a supplemental agreement request, not to increase the fees, but to reallocate some money in other areas that were not spent, more or less just doing some housekeeping. Since this is an Endot contract, I think this is the best way to go to keep everybody, you know, everything transparent and move from one item to the next. So it's moving about $17,000 from geotechnical engineering and some unused right-of-way portions for another line item that's not engineering. So more or less, it's a net zero change to the contract, but it would require approval of the commissioners. But if that's something that you guys would like to entertain, I can provide a contract and-
I think that'd be fine, as long as we're not going over what we've already committed.
Right, so, okay. So I plan on working on that.
Next week.
Bring it back to you.
That'd be great.
That's all I've got?
Okay. Thank you. Oh, here's your documents. Thanks. Ron.
I got such several things. I don't know which ones you want to deal with first, but obviously, there's a timeline that I have prepared Well, two-sided. Obviously, nothing terribly magical about it, but you can give us some thought to some variable issues, such as what would be the effective date if there's a decision to withdraw? Because withdrawal from a joint district is tantamount to dissolution of the district. So it requires there to be two resolutions, two identical resolutions basically passed at least 15 days apart, but not more than 45 by, in this case, we're talking Wayne County, that's direction it used to go. And then sharing that, delivering those, submitting them to the Union County Board of County Commissioners and to the item commissioner. And then that process then has to begin to identify legal obligations of the joint district and any assets of the joint district and develop a plan for allocation of the obligations and division of the assets. So that basically, you have essentially 90 days from the effective date of your resolution to complete the determinations and complete the plaintiffs' plea. And I would think this didn't change since the original outline I remember I sent you back. But just to clarify, if the joint district is dissolved, then neither Union County nor Wayne County are compelled to be a member of any district. You have the option to join an existing district to stand alone district, just one county or a lot of people to be- It's not decreed to designate Wayne County solid waste district.
And that third option of not being a part of a solid waste district is relatively new.
I think-
Changed like 2019, maybe.
I think it was around 2015, 2015, 16.
But we are continuing to talk. I'm the vice president. Barry Ritter is the president of WUR this year. So we're having conversations with the Union County Commissioners as well as Mayor Holder and Pat Smoker, who is the director of the Richmond Sanitary District. And what we're looking for in Tim Williams and I have been talking frequently about, is there a way to do essentially what we've been doing without being a standalone solid waste district or a regional for that matter? So the discussions continue. We're gonna meet as the Wayne County Board members of WUR to discuss options and get an idea of where people are at. In talking with Pat Smoker, who's again the head of Richmond Sanitary District, he has been interested for a while and continues to have interest in expanding recycling to all of Wayne County and is open to the idea of including having recycling available to residents of Union County at sites in Wayne County. And so if that all can be worked out, it seems to me that there is no significant compelling reason for us to continue as a solid waste district. So we'll have those discussions. It will come back to the Wayne County Commissioners to actually take action if it comes to that.
At a minimum, I think we probably want to have a redefined interlocal to keep the district.
Agreed, because the interlocal is at least, what, 15 years old?
And I think-
Or may go back to the 90s.
I think there probably have been, there's probably been less than total literal compliance with procedural requirements of statute. That's gonna be a verus question.
And, you know, one of the real challenges is that while the Wayne County Commissioners make the decision of whether we're participating or not, the organization itself is not a part of Wayne County government. It is a standalone entity with its own board. However, we have to make some concessions. So the employee is actually a Wayne County employee, and there's a partnership with the Wayne County Soil and Water District as well as the Union County Soil and Water District that complicates the whole process even further. There are expenses from on that that will go away as a separate audit if we move down this path. So there are a lot of things to consider. Bringing a recommendation from the Wayne County Board members along with an outline of what Mr. Smoker feels Richmond Sanitary District can do in Wayne County. The mayor, as a member of the board from Wayne County, will also be part of those discussions and has been. So in the next 30 days, I would suggest we be coming back to this group to take action, at least, as Ron said, at the very least with a revision to the interlocal agreement between Union County and Wayne County. The other end of the spectrum would be a withdrawal from the regional organization, which, because there's only two counties now, if one withdraws, the organization essentially dissolves because you can't have a regional group that'll leave.
You have a joint without two counties.
Exactly. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that, and it'll be moving forward fairly quickly from this point.
Couple of questions up. Is Pat Smoker actually proposing curbside collection?
Only potentially in the towns that already, that have their own trucks and do their own collecting. So we'll see where that goes. But it could be additional locations, like the one in Hagerstown, where there is recycling. It could involve Richmond Sanitary District collecting those, operating those stations.
Because history has shown the only way to greatly increase recycling numbers is curbside.
Correct, correct. And therefore, our focus are on recycling. A means of doing curbside recycling has not been particularly effective, but has been pretty expensive.
Another question I have is my last term on WUR's board, in the final years, like '21, '22, the participation by Union County appointees to the WUR board was quite sporadic. That's generous. How has it been in the last couple of years?
Well, that's a, there's no easy answer to that because there has been a move towards having proxies, I'll call them, but there's no provision for that in statute. So there has been participation, but not necessarily from appointed elected officials.
Okay, I was trying to take up temperature here. There was a longstanding reticence to even make appointments or attendance.
Well, it doesn't do a lot of good to appoint somebody if you know they can't attend. So they've been working with us. We've been talking to them.
Okay, so the temperature is better than it had been.
Absolutely.
Interest is keen at this point. Is that going too far?
I think it's going too far.
Okay.
Depends on who you ask.
Okay, but a spirit of partnership and resolution of the WUR issue is open.
I think we are moving towards an agreement and resolution of the issue, but at the moment, it's still an open question as to which way we'll jump.
I mean, back in '21, '22, we even offered to meet in Union County.
Correct.
And we thought, you know, for nine of us to go down to Liberty was kind of, you know, an open-handed gesture of cooperation, and that-
I think they know that we're interested in working with them as best we can. I think they also know that there are some significant limitations to what we can do and what kind of impact that has on recycling. And of course, the recycling effort is focused on Richmond Sanitary District because that's the only landfill in the two counties. And obviously, they have an interest in improving because anything that is recycled does not go into that landfill. So that's the motivation, to try to work together as best we can.
Okay, so thank you for opening that.
Absolutely.
And the tipping fees. Their tipping fee schedule has an accommodation for funding WUR, obviously, as we, I think, when you were still on the board.
Correct.
That was increased by action of their- It's not a pledge of that money. It's basically just part of their budgetary structure. So they should have resources if it were to come to where there would be the refocusing of recycling effort.
Correct.
Clyde, Moberly Road?
Yes.
I think I sent you a proposed ordinance, a couple typos and corrections that were made, so.
I think we're ready to move forward with that. And I would propose that we schedule that meeting for two weeks from today, which would be the 30th of October. And we, at our public hearing about this issue, we told those in attendance that we would notify them when we were ready to take action. So I think we'll work to get notices out to the property owners that are-
This is not another public hearing. This is just basically, if you remember, that commitment was made, so this is just following through. And any ordinance adoption would have to obviously occur in a public meeting.
Correct. And so if it's a unanimous vote on that date, we can go ahead and approve the ordinance. If it's not unanimous, it'll have to come back for a second vote. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I think we're in agreement.
And we are still looking to address Mike's concerns. Problem is that the legal description that we have identified as the apparent right-of-way as it relates to the cul-de-sac is not quite as broad as Mike would like it, and in fact, would not be appropriate to be part of the document if used since it hasn't been used. So that doesn't really fit. So we're gonna seek, and Mike's, I think he reported last week, has indicated he's contacted three property owners. There's no need for that.
Go ahead, then, if there's no objection. Again, it's not a public hearing, so it doesn't have to be advertised, but we need to reach out to the adjacent property owners that'll be impacted and let them know that we're gonna plan and to take action at that meeting.
But the chair would allow questions and comments from the public as usual?
Sure, sure. I mean, it's, you know, the process has been very transparent all along, to the point of, you know, allowing legal opinions to come from property owners. They didn't get along well.
Job security.
So Bobby, we'll go ahead and work on that. What else have you got, Ron?
I made a modification to that cost agreement. I just, as far as I'm behind- I just, so my, as far as I'm behind, so my system was off the same weekend as all. So she, Carol's buying too. We get that, I think you just wanted to clarify the language of the contribution.
Correct.
Union County would not be in addition to, but it would be go.
Part of.
Of the south.
Correct. And I, I have talked to Tim Williams in Union County about, called him the day after he got your letter and, and, you know, we talked about why we felt that after fifteen years, it was time to update the inter-local agreement. He's fine with it. As long as we're not requesting any additional funding, we're considering changing the way that the word.
We had a public record request or sometime ago and for Mirror Indiana for those positions. I, the sheriff editor and the sheriff and Bobby would get the documents. I looked at them. I was able to probably eliminate at least half of them from that release. So I'll give that to you and we'll get that turned around. Mirror Indiana, does that ring any bells to? I Googled them and they're kind of a, looks like a advocacy, self-created advocacy group that publishes various, I wouldn't say newsite, newspapers. M.I., Mirror Indy is.
M.I.R.R.O.R.
Like Wicking Glass?
Yes. So I, I, they're pretty active. I know, I think Northeastern Schools got, received one and I don't know if Richmond has or not. So they're, I don't know what they're looking for, but they, they were asking for personnel files of former police officers in our instance, former sheriffs of officers. See, I think that's really just about it. I've got the mainstream and we can talk about that. And then Steve, see you've got a couple of contracts. I want you to be aware of a bid protest we had at Richmond Schools over the, it must have been about a month and a half ago over the, it's for the test roof project. One of the bidders took the position that the apparent low bidder should have been pre-certified with the State Department of Administration Public Works Division. And that's the first time that issue had really been addressed as to when they need to be certified.
Yeah, when it has to be certified.
When, yeah. And I did some research on it and I came to a fairly confident conclusion, which scares me a little bit, that they have to be on local public works projects certified if A, the contract amount is in excess of three hundred thousand dollars, which ours was a bit, and B, before they begin the work, not at the time they submit the bid. Now, if you look at a separate statute that deals with state projects that the department itself administers and bets for the bidding process, it does say they have to be, it's a different statute, but it's very clear.
For state.
For state, for state projects, they have to be certified at the time of its middle. Otherwise they're not a qualified bidder. We don't have that same definition in the local public.
Are you comfortable with the way we're doing it then?
I am, but because of the statute and we're looking at twenty million dollars in Richmond Schools and we bonded just now that most of which is going to go into capital projects with, I sent a, the, the, the bid protester out of Indianapolis, this company, sent a, an email to the director of the Public Works Division of the Department of Administration asking whether the public schools projects had to be, bidders had to be pre-certified at the time of bidding. She sent back just a one letter response saying yes. I mean, one, an email saying yes. So I sent her a letter and I'll give you copies of it, basically a copy of my opinion letter I gave to LWC and then statutory basis of why I think she's wrong.
So is that, is it the three hundred thousand dollar threshold?
Yeah. If it's below that, there's no pre-certification.
How do you, you know, how do you know what, before, if the estimate is two ninety and it comes in at three ten, should be.
Well, I think, yeah. Well, I think that because of the fact that I, the way, my interpretation is we don't, they don't have to be pre-certified till they begin the work, so we know what the cost is. And so if it's over three, three hundred over, yeah, I think they get certified. I, I think, you know, I don't think we disqualify any bidder because they're not pre-certified.
Okay. I agree with that.
And, and I think there's a rationale for it, although I hate to prescribe rational motives to legislation. But, but you know, the state's got to look at, they're looking at contractors statewide.
Right.
Whereas local public works tend to be a little bit more localized and regionalized, so we don't quite have the same array of contractors that they do. I, I anyhow, I, I sent a letter back out and asked yesterday, asked them to consult with their legal folks and give me a contact.
If in fact, just, just to run the string out, the, the low bidder can't be certified.
Well, then you gotta move on.
You gotta move on to the next, or do you have to do it over?
Uh, I think the apparent low bidder became non-responsive, so you go to the next. Okay. I, I think there's, you'd look at the timeframe. I mean, you could do it a year later, but I mean, if it's all the time, I think you're okay. And, you know, because the statute does say if you, contracts let in violation of the statute void, that's a pretty significant downside. So if, if in fact, they were to take that position, I think we have, I'm going to talk to a couple, you know, schools and we'd have to consider whether we want to maybe think file for a declaratory judgment.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Steve? Okay, on your project sheet, first project we talked about is the NX generator. Everything's been delivered except the generator. It was scheduled to be delivered this morning and the trucking company that is to, it's, it's obviously has a boom that's that off and the trucking company has postponed that, so I don't have a big date yet set that. I'm getting a little bit concerned that the weather's going to change on us and so we'll continue to march forward, I guess. Chamber Technology, the Wilco Electronics has fulfilled everything that was in the original contract that we had with Joe Miller and we made that final payment to them. And you can see the far right-hand corner, right-hand column, just a little bit left of that budget amount. So with the original project, everything that Wayne's originally designed is in and working with the exception of the tracking of the cameras. Continues to work on that. Seems to be a communication issue between the camera and the software. Software was the appropriate software to start with. Still working with the public to, to have these, have tracking these cameras, you know, around the front. And what they're supposed to do, anytime somebody talks, it's supposed to move towards that person, like our Al does. And so of the original specifications, that is the only thing that he has not been able to fix. So.
Okay.
Do we continue?
Good deal.
We have the courthouse elevator study. Obviously you received that, we paid that and we've gone through the contract and I'll talk about that in just a bit. The Coleman Center Roof just got the contract from LWC. It has been signed by the contractor and that is the documents that you have in front of you at the very top. It's AADAM 101. And Ron, I know you didn't get this real quick.
I looked at it. One thing we were going to be looking at in some of our contracts going down the road, if you recall from my experience with another situation, was putting in some numbers for limitation of loss profit if we abandoned the project. This is not going to, you're looking at an October thirty-first completion date, so that's small, so I, I have no problem.
So you're okay with this? So the dollar amount on this one was, was the bid amount. Was there some question I recommend? So this, this is the contract with LWC. This is the contract with contractors who won the bid. For Coleman Roof.
Yeah, okay. Seventy-five thousand. No arbitration.
Correct. So, yeah. I checked all those things.
Basically, LWC under it as well as we more.
Yeah. So if you're so inclined, does this have the language in it about not being WR? Are you putting that in the contracts now?
I don't think it's in there.
I don't think I saw that.
I think that's part of their certification, but they, this is one that's so small.
In that in the bids process where they have to sign that document? That, that was they certify that prior to the contract.
Okay.
That's part of the bid.
It's part of their, it's part of the bid. Part of the Form 968, I, I need to. Because this is federally funded, this is from our, correct?
Yes, this is from marketing.
So that needs to be vetted.
Subject to vetting for varment.
Yep.
Yes. I'll, I'll make that motion.
Subject to additions and deductions as provided in the contract documents. Page three, I mean, we're agreeing to seventy-five thousand dollars. Subject to additions and deductions.
Bobby, change orders.
Yeah. Any ceiling to that additions?
I don't think, you know, we built, remember we did build in a ten percent.
Well, yeah, that's always there, but that has a ceiling.
It does. And, and they can't go over that ceiling.
No, no, this is the roof.
Yeah, this is the roof.
That's a joke. Because this is the ceiling, right? So.
What is the ceiling on that roof?
It's ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
Is that a, that's a budgetary.
That's a budgetary number.
Yeah, but contractual ceiling is what I'm looking for here.
But again, well, it's, it's on the, the dollar amount is.
I mean, I've just seen this and that sort of jumped out at me. I just wanted to confirm that there is a, it's not an open.
It is not open-ended. The statute says that if it's essentially the same scope of work, you cannot increase the contract amount more than twenty percent. Now, that doesn't apply to unforeseen circumstances that arise as frequently the case in rehabs and renovation projects, but, you know. So the work wasn't, you know, for instance, if you found something that you only wanted to address while the contractor was on the job, was mobilized, and that would put it over to twenty percent, if that was not foreseen, foreseen at the time that you did your specs of bidding, then it's not considered as an impermissible increase in scope of work. Otherwise, if you're just wanting to, you know.
I guess I'm looking for that language in the contract.
It's in the statute. We don't necessarily have to have.
And on page three, the contract amount is seventy-five thousand dollars, subject to additions or deductions as provided in the contract documents. And those are change orders.
Those would be change orders.
Yeah, and each change order would come to you before it's paid or approved.
Approved.
And we would have the option of.
Doing it or not. Correct. Sometimes the change orders.
Sometimes you're.
Have like a choice.
Yeah, right.
If they're in the field and, you know.
And they run into something.
We typically let the, help the architect as the owner's rep in the field take those calls.
And that's how, that's how it's processed. They, they have to submit the change order to the architect and then they review it. And in this case, they're putting a coating on the roof. They're not opening it up and, and they go, oh my gosh.
Correct.
There's a bunch of dry rot here. The coating on top. They've already, they've already been up on the roof and so the chances of them finding something.
Right.
It's going to be pretty small.
If they were turning earth and finding an Indian burial ground, which I doubt they're going to find in the roof.
Probably not, probably not.
So, okay. I just wanted some assurance this was not open-ended.
Can we get the contract updated as Ken Pausas president? Yeah, I saw that. Wow, this contract goes backwards. I'm sure it's a form that they got.
Ben, with that, I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve this, subject to the varment. Yeah. The varment and changing the, the signature page. Is that on the signature page?
Yeah.
You would be comfortable with just marking that out and writing your name? I didn't, I didn't have that stipulation Mr. Dwinger had.
I am fine with that, but in the future, I mean, eventually we're going to have to.
Yeah, in the future.
Update our contracts then.
I'll cross it out, right? Yeah, I would like to not hold this up because this is going to be short. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Well, you know, one for the auditor, one for, I need five. Cross it off on that. Why you cross it? You're signing it.
While you're there.
All right. Give him your. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor of the motion, save the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion carries. Hey, they even crossed off the, the contractor CEO.
Yeah.
So I guess we're good with that too. Going on down, I haven't gotten the contract yet from LWC on the ceilings. It'll be the same, same process, so just soon as I get that, I'll bring it to you. The expo hall HVAC, obviously the weather's not been inducing the painting due to the cold weathers, but it's warming up and I would assume that we'd get that finished sometime in the next couple of days. And then the IT cabling project, you're going to receive RFPs this morning at ten-thirty on that. Proxy car lock system, they were supposed to have a quote due today and I did not receive that. I emailed the individual responsible and he's out of the office this week, so probably won't see that until next week. Now. Have you.
Yeah, there's been signed.
Heard any more on the x-ray equipment for the courthouse? No, can you not follow up on that, please?
Speaking of proxy card, I've been thinking.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. I would hope that we would have a backup kind of manual access to the elevators.
There is, yeah.
So the proxy card, wouldn't it be the only way we could get prisoners from the basement to the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there'll always be a, a key over.
Because we could always have glitches in our system, but the manual mechanical key is always going to work.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
And then the courthouse elevator, you, you have that contract and this is the contract between us and LWC. That's the one that says B 101 on the top and I, Ron, this is the first time I've seen this today.
Okay.
If you want to give him a little time to look at this.
Always there.
The amount of the contract is seventy-one. Seventy-one, seven fifty, and that is about five point three percent of the estimated cost for both renovation of the elevator and installing the elevator. So Jeff, you want to wait till this evening after you've talked to council?
Yeah, for the fact gives Ron enough time to review. Maybe.
What was the thought of where this would be? We have a contracts line in ARPA.
This has to come out of ARPA?
What else would you suggest? That's what the, that's what it's for, to pay for, for engineering.
So I'll present that.
So I'll present that tonight during my thing and then we can talk about the contract and maybe.
And if, if Ron gets back with us.
Yep. And then again, the numbers in the far right-hand corner are your balances. That's all I've got.
Basically, there's, LWC's scope of work for the elevators is just taking through bidding. It's not an installation. It appears that their scope of work is only taking it through.
Design.
Design development, construction documents, bidding, eight seventeen. I mean, I don't know. We need them.
I'll, I'll, I'll question that after we meet.
It's probably, if I look in here, there'll probably be an additional service and it's probably got a schedule for what that would be usually on an hourly basis. I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm more or less asking you if you see there's a need for a, a involvement during.
I think in this case, yeah.
Kind of like to make sure.
Yep.
We got a more needle.
And, and of course, council has not weighed in on whether they're going to support the elevator and rehab of the old elevator or not yet, so.
Correct, and, and I don't think you need to make that decision right away because this is going to be bid as an alternate. The rehab is an alternate, so once we get that bid, we'll bring it back to council for that final discussion. But certainly we can approach that.
Need to warm them up to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this engineering bid includes for element, uh, ultimate.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I have?
That's all you have? Okay. Five minutes, we've got five minutes until the, the opening, so do you want to do? And it's.
Because I have not seen. Okay. Go, what, so we'll change the topics altogether, suit you guys?
I, I, I got a report from Laura Miller, the biannual report that's required to advise the commissioners on, and the planning commission, on act, activity in the solar ordinance field. And long story short, since her April twelve report, there have been no petitions filed for special exception for solar fields, and therefore there's been no public comment and. No action in the last six months. No solar activity, no solar activity.
That's the eclipse.
Space lasers. Okay. And northern lights. Okay, move for approval off the phone. Regular claims dated October sixteenth. Mastercard claims dated October seventeenth. Court claims dated October eighteenth. Didn't have little headings on this time. Payroll dated October eighteenth. First IRS claim stated October eighteenth.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Also move for approval of commissioner's minutes dated October ninth.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October ninth meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Headlines on these. I had to scan them to hear what.
Okay, we got a few minutes yet before we get into the bid opening.
Should we have some traveling music?
I will, I'll go ahead and bring up one thing here while, while we're waiting for ten-thirty to roll around. So we gave an opioid settlement grant in the original award period to Meridian, to, as I recall, it was to open a mother and baby housing unit. And it appears that they have not been able to do that yet and they would like to request shifting that money to another program that also involves mothers and children, but it's a treatment program rather than a housing program. Are you familiar with what they're requesting or do you want us to, do you want me to invite them to come in and tell us more about it before we make the decision?
I've been in conversation with them about it and said they would like to come and explain that, but in the meantime, since we started, because I've been calling them regularly, saying, how are we coming with real estate? And they've, they've given me some of their real estate locations that I've checked out and we were really hopeful on one close to Earlham, which we thought they were going to close on many, many months ago. That fell through, like so many others, our real estate situation and I, I can vouch for the fact that there's, we do not have an active real estate availability situation. And, but in the meantime, since all this discussion has been going on, they hosted at this mother baby treatment center, the Wayne County Drug Free Partnership Meeting and gave us a tour of their facilities and had a presentation because they also received a small grant from Drug Free Wayne County. And it was a fine presentation in partnership with Reed and IU and nursing, they had a lot of community partners. I think the entire group, I forget, were you there at that, uh, it was, uh, Meridian presentation? It was excellent. And I think the whole treatment community that was there was impressed as well. So people who are in that profession, I think, seeing with my own eyes and having a lengthy presentation on site is better than having, you know, administrators come in and give a presentation here. I personally like having a site visit and a lengthy detailed presentation has satisfied me.
Do you recall how much we gave them in the original?
Fifty thousand.
I thought it was fifty or a hundred, I couldn't remember.
No, it was fifty.
So are you comfortable then in proposing that we allow them to shift that money?
They have certainly given due diligence to the real estate search. And I feel that that which was desired to be met in the initial grant is being met with the changing needs, frankly, in the two years almost since we considered their proposal. The need has kind of shifted to for more outpatient care. So I would move that we allow Meridian to shift their grant application from a mother baby residential facility to an outpatient treatment that is ongoing at the current time.
And can we include in that motion that we ask them to give the details to you so that you can record?
Okay.
That new project as it, as we.
Sort of like a change order, right?
Exactly.
Right, and please report, had the differences between what was initially authorized and what is currently ongoing?
Okay, there's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion, are you comfortable?
No, I'm very comfortable with that. I mean, Meridian's not, you know, they know what they're doing. And I feel like if they, if they feel like they need to shift this, then it's ability to it, so.
Okay.
And as long as they're still doing the treatment and it's very similar to what they were planning to do, I have no problem with that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. All right. It is past ten-thirty, so why don't we shift to open the bid? Hi Craig, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So far, so good.
Right.
Still early.
Still early. Wow, it's going to be good.
Lot of your claim packets. Can I pass you the minutes?
Yes.
Trying to keep them away from the black hole.
Thank you.
Did you bring any scissors, Bobby? Yeah, some of these packets won't.
Take notes.
Some disassembly required. First bid is from AKA Comp Solutions. Thank you, Bobby. Second is from Northern AB Group. Third is from Cummins Electric Incorporated.
These are proposals in response to an RFP.
Fourth is from Sea Cat. Of Indianapolis. Only four. That's enough.
I hope.
Better than none.
Better than none.
Better keep that, Charlie. Turns out it was received on time.
Do I have that binder when we go?
Yeah. These are not yet public documents.
Correct. So. Craig is going to review them and then you'll, you'll bring us a recommendation next week?
Yes. Then take the work and react anything. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move that we take these under advisement.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to take the proposals under advisement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay, I've got a couple of other things that we can cover with you, so. We have discussed several times that the federal dollars for, for internet service are now being, in the process of being allocated. We have had a couple of providers approach us with requests for us to write letters in support. And what I have told them is, and I thought commissioners would be agreeable to writing a letter, but that we would write letters for anyone who was applying for funding because we were much more concerned with getting access to internet rather than who provides that access. So we have had requests from, from two organizations. Mainstream Fiber, which is a local Indiana company, and Frontier, which is reinventing itself from the phone company to primarily an internet provider. I believe that they will have phone service as well as, as options for accessing video, television shows and whatnot. But this is primarily for their, their internet service. Both of these groups are interested in focusing on Western Wayne County and provide more access to the unincorporated areas, but they also would serve incorporated areas as they were able. Remember that the, it's called BEAD, and I apologize, I don't recall what the B E A D stands for off the top of my head, but it's, it's a federal program that's providing Indiana with almost nine hundred million dollars, which will be allocated first to providing the internet service for unserved locations and secondarily for underserved locations. I would recommend that we write letters of support and they have requested now that those letters be returned to them by the end of the week. So I could write a letter and send it to you all for your approval and then, and then send it out. Our letterhead with my signature if you're agreeable with that and get it.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Along these same lines, we have had a request from Mainstream Fiber that if they are successful, they would, they would ask that we look at putting in an infrastructure development zone. I've asked Ron to do some research, I don't think he's had an opportunity to go too deep into it yet, but.
There's not much depth to be had. Essentially, you have to define what the zone is, the geographic territory that you want to comprise the zone, so you want to be helping coordinate it. And then you have a public hearing, a prepared proposed ordinance to declare an infrastructure development zone. And this can also open up the ability to get tax exemption for any other included utilities that primarily relate to natural gas. You may not want to go that far at this point, just use, you're concerned as with the, for internet, deployment, transmission of broadband service. And. And which is what they're asking for, obviously.
They need every.
The statute includes, the statute covers various types. An eligible infrastructure means storage, compressed natural gas, liquefied natural gas, transmission and distribution. Facilities to be used in the delivery of natural gas or supplemental or substitute forms of gas sources by a natural gas utility. Facilities and technology used in development of transmission broadband service. Have or defined or classified by the FCC. Or advanced services, what it, you know, as provider of broadband or advanced, whatever advanced services are. Facilities used in the treatment, storage, distribution of water by a water utility. Facilities used in collection, treatment of wastewater by a wastewater utility. As used in this chapter, a broadband service provider or advanced services includes a telephone company or cable company.
Huh.
So you basically create your ordinance, you don't have to, you don't have to touch all those bases if you're going with your ordinance.
Limit it to broadband.
Broadband, I think you can't, you have to hold a public hearing, then they make following findings. And then if you do that, they are exempt from property taxation. In the zone. As written, they don't claim property taxation, so I would assume that would include real and personal property.
To the extent they have real property.
Yeah, they may not.
I mean, you might just have these side effects.
Wonder what Spectrum has?
They never asked for this.
So let's look at our property tax potential from Spectrum.
And what it doesn't say is. How you get out of it if you don't like it. It's a total of maybe two pages.
Didn't the sample letter that they sent, they put a title limit on it? Yes, they're, they're suggesting that.
We could sunset our own.
And what I'm suggesting is that, that we could put in the letter that. We support this to the point where we are willing to investigate the possibility of.
Bold.
But I'm, I'm not opposed to it just out of hand, but I think we need to look into it a lot more deeply before we can actually commit to that. If you're okay with that, then I'll, I'll use that language in the, in the letter and, and we'll see what happens.
We had the motion to send letters of. Okay, just for clarification, BEAD is broadband equity access and deployment. And I move that we also respond to the local state firm saying that we will investigate into the opportunities.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Since we're on the topic, I don't suppose you've heard any update on connectivity with all the fiber optics that have been laid throughout the land?
Only that I, I'm hearing from some folks who have access to it now. Very happy.
What part of the county?
All different parts, so.
No rhyme or reason.
Not that I can determine, but you know, it's five or six people out of the whole county and doesn't, doesn't set a whole lot of patterns there.
Been some high-speed ZTR damage to some of those posts.
I, I did, as I was talking to both of these companies, you know, they, they. Asked me, what's my address? They can tell me if they would be serving me. And I said, it doesn't matter whether you're serving me, it matters that you're serving people in Wayne County, so let's not even go there, but. There, I, I want to say the number that they both quoted was about eighteen hundred. Passings of locations that are unserved, that are eligible for. For this BEAD money. And so unserved is frequently in the eye of the beholder, but it, it. Has a specific definition by various standards that it's receiving less than twenty-five, ten upload-download speeds. And that nobody claims that they're serving them there. So one of the issues, for example, at my house is that we're on a Wi-Fi. A wireless location and it, it is very, the speeds are, are. Mostly below those levels, but I'm classified as underserved, not unserved, so. It, it depends, and I'm told that there's equipment I could buy and install that would, would make it faster. Without paying more for the service, but I've chosen not to at this point. These are all, are both talking about fiber connections. Direct fiber to the home, obviously Frontier serves a pretty broad area or did. With copper and they'll be upgrading to fiber. Frontier is, is planning to mainly to underground. Where Mainstream, as I recall, was planning about the same mix as Spectrum, about eighty percent air and, and twenty percent underground. So they'll be using the existing poles and placing new poles as are, as is needed. So we'll see what happens. Funding, the federal funding is a big part of whether they'll be able to move forward, but both of them. Talking about significant private investment to, to get the infrastructure in place, so. I think Mainstream was thirteen billion dollars, of which they were requesting three million dollars from. From the state Frontier, I forget the number, but you know, Frontier is, is focused. In a significant way on where they have provided phone service in the past, so. We'll see what happens, but it's a, it's a significant investment, significant opportunity to reduce unserved locations in Wayne County, so.
The template they provided, A, they just assumed to be the entire county. And B, they say it applies only to personal property tax exemption.
Implies that they don't have any real property and I think that's probably the case.
And there is no sense in that, I see.
I don't see much risk with this going forward with that request.
Well, let's, let's investigate it further. Yeah, and we'll, we'll see where we end up. Okay. Bobby, you've got a couple of things on reserving the chambers and hotel rate increase.
Yes. Forty Court is requesting a rate increase to a hundred and thirty-two dollars a night for three nights, one room at MC Suite Hilton.
A motion in a second to approve the rate increase. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
We've been having issues with people reserving the chambers and not writing it on the calendar and having them booking. So we're wanting to go to maybe a new process. We've made up a form that will go on the internet for them to fill out, will send it to me. It'll come to you commissioners for approval of the room before they can have it.
You're not for that.
One thing that we thought about with, that's only meeting once a week, is maybe giving Jeff the authority to approve the rooms. Ahead of time, that way they can, we can have a quicker turnaround of the approval of the room. And then we'll make a calendar on the internet or on the internet, so where everybody can see their reservations. But I'll be the only one that can actually put it on the internet aside from IT. That way they can look and see if it'll be open before they even request their reservation.
And who did you say can approve it?
Jeff will prove it.
Jeff, oh, I was just saying Josh, I was trying to.
If it's a kind of government function, why do we need to have it approved? If the chambers is open and it's first come, first served, why do we need that? Congress staff across.
I don't think we did, we didn't before, it's just.
Are there any implications? For the fact that I have to be real-time IT, you know, access? For, for people starting January or July, July one.
I think, I think we're talking a lot of times about things that will not be videoed. You know, it's if a, a department has a departmental meeting and they need a place to hold.
I mean, those would be fine, but I, I guess my question is, do we know yet what that's gonna look like as far as what we were able to read in real time?
For one thing, the cameras are gonna have to work before, before July first. And I think, I think Bobby's concern is if there are two groups that want to use this room. And, and one is a critical issue. Not sure I can think of one off the top of my head, but let's say it's, it's a meeting of the security committee. And somebody forgot to reserve the room and so it's been reserved for a, a party. I, I think the idea is that's the case, somebody needs to decide who gets to use the room. And, and she doesn't want it to be her.
And that's fine, but how many types of occasions come up?
Not often, because most people generally do get it on the calendar. We've had about three incidences in the last few months where we've had.
I'm okay with, there's rare occasions that Jeff can make the decision who gets to work.
But after July one, you will need to know who, the security meeting would not be telling.
Correct.
Would not have cameras.
And, and the only, only a, a. Governmental entity that's required to have public meetings, I believe.
The birthday party doesn't need cameras.
Would not need cameras.
And Bobby needs to know that.
Bobby needs to know that. Wouldn't have to be me, you know, it could be somebody who's in charge of. Facilities and development or something to have. We can sort that out. I get your point. It shouldn't be cumbersome, we want people to use this room.
For example, you know. You and I have meetings that we meet in here that come up within the hour. And.
Absolutely.
Seems like a cumbersome.
And I would almost always approve those.
Okay, aside from us then, I mean, you know.
The governor's rep stops by and wants to see how.
If they go on the, I, I agree with the calendar on the portal, so that way they can see it from the desk. But if it's open, it's open.
Well, but the calendar on the portal is, is, can anybody update it or do we need to restrict? Who can update it? So, so in this case, if Bobby puts it out there and somebody says. Or it's not open, if, if you can, can you, if you can put something in, could you also take something out?
I.
You could, but I mean.
But not leave it on everybody.
Well, and maybe we can restrict it so you can, you could fill in the blank, but you couldn't erase the ones that's in there. I don't know.
And I think that still kind of goes back to the issue we're having now where they can come up here and write it on the calendar, they just don't. So if we leave it to one person putting the reservations in, if they don't come to me, then they shouldn't have any option.
That becomes the process is to contact Bobby.
We'll just lock the room if they don't lock the calendar, help me in. I mean, it's pretty simple. If you didn't put your name on the calendar, then you, and somebody else did, you know, guess who gets the room? We will unlock the room.
Are there any repeat offenders on failure to sign up?
I don't think there's really any repeat.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe we're making too much out of it and it could.
There is one department that is frequently unlocked.
Well, okay, I think. Well, I think we could deal with, I had a feeling this was maybe something that could be dealt with individually more. In fact, I'm uncomfortable with anybody being able to sign up for this room. Because there are lots of retirements and birthday parties and anniversary parties that, that we hadn't really envisioned this room to be, you know, a party room.
It's, it's rarely, I, I just, that was the first thing that came to mind of.
But if it's that easy to get instead of having the mess in your own office, there's some department heads and.
I don't think it's been used that way. I think that was just the first thing that popped into my head. I, I don't recall that, other than, other than for. Things that Joe has done for United Way. I don't recall there'd be. A lot of, a lot of party kinds of issues in here.
I think that would invite it though, if it's that easy to sign up for.
Let's, let's move on and take this and see if we can massage what we're talking about, figure something out. Okay, because I want to talk about this before our meeting tonight. Pass one of those down. So here we are to the point now where Beth and I and Steve are, are meeting frequently. To, to look at where we at with ARPA allocations. Where are we with actual documentation of those commitments, which requires a contract? And there are two new projects that you will see on here. So I'll walk you through it because this is admittedly not the easiest document to read, but. The emergency communications towers and radios and the new elevator project are both listed here. So we are going to see today, the initial budget for the, the radio project was one point five million. We are gonna hear tonight that the revised number is three million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. Which leaves a shortfall in funding of one million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. So what I have listed below there are ways that we can move some ARPA funds into that line item to get it to fully funded. And, and by moving these things around. So the first element under the tower radio is housing infrastructure. So that is budgeted under, under the HELP program with ARPA funds of one million, sixty thousand, eight hundred dollars. My suggestion is because of the timing right now, we are not gonna have time to implement that using ARPA dollars. And get those dollars committed by December thirty-first. So I'm suggesting we move that money into the radio project. And we actually fund that in the future with Wayne County Edit Funds. Which the balance in the Wayne County Edit Fund is currently close to three and a half million dollars. So that then leaves a shortfall of five hundred seventy-seven thousand. The highway project, Mike has determined not to move forward with the wash bay. And so that's about a two hundred thousand dollar project. He has asked that in lieu of that wash bay, that he be allowed to take another fifty thousand dollars towards the, the fuel tank project. Which initially we gave him five hundred thousand and said, pay any overage out of highway funds. So this would include paying that overage of roughly fifty thousand dollars. So this would include paying that overage of roughly $50,000 out of, out of ARPA funds, leaving 150,000 that could be moved towards the radio project.
Why not the wash bay? He thought that was pretty important at one point.
He thinks it's too expensive. We agree. I agree. Steve and I talked to him about it and as has Max from council. And the issue has become, there would be ways to do it less expensively, but not ways that, that Wayne County Government should do it less expensively because it's essentially a commercial building. And we would need to follow commercial, uh, commercial guidelines. And that is going to put the, the project cost around $200,000. Steve, if you want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I, the, the initial estimate was based upon a certain type of design of the structure and it doesn't meet the commercial code. So do that and add to the cost of the building.
But the initial cost was pretty pricey.
I know, but it'll, when it's commercial, it's more pricey.
So how is he meeting that need now?
He has a location that they use. It wouldn't change anything to not have.
That location doesn't have to meet code.
It's existing. It's, it's currently existing and there probably has been.
But it meets his need for now.
It meets his need. So it's not, it's not, it's not optimal, but we can't, we can't pay for all of these things. And so here's, and remember, this is just one option. You know, there are so many permutations here. Take this project away, you know, take 10,000 off of that project and come up with these numbers. But it gives a sense of what we need to do if, if in fact, you know, we haven't committed to doing a 3.1 million dollar radio project.
But at least it's $800,000 less than it was.
Than it was originally, correct.
Do you know what was sacrificed in that $800,000 improvement?
We are, we are, and Barry's going to go through this exhaustively. He said his presentation is going to take an hour tonight. But it includes things like, instead of buying buildings and generators from Motorola, we would buy them ourselves. We would buy renovated, used buildings essentially. We would buy our own generators and have them installed. We would do the concrete work separately. There are a number of, of things that he's going to recommend and I don't know what all of those are, but the new number is that 3.1 million. So there are a couple of other projects, the student community engagement at 50,000, creating places for Richmond, which has not been paid yet at 10,000, which actually were originally slated to come out of, of, of County Edit and inadvertently got moved into ARPA. So we would pull those out and pay them out of the Edit Line and that would save $60,000. The courthouse exterior came in 78,000 under, under budget and then.
Really? I didn't remember hearing that before.
And so there was a change order. There is 355,000 in uncommitted ARPA. If we use 289,000 of that, that, that pays for the towers and leaves 65,852 in uncommitted ARPA.
This is the totally uncommitted, not which is temporarily being used for county projects.
Correct, but we won't get to that unfortunately. So the cost of the elevators, the, the new elevator would be 850,000 dollars is the engineer's estimate. Refurbishing of the existing elevator, 450,000 dollars, which is a total of 1.3 million. You use the rest of the uncommitted ARPA and that puts us at 1.234 million. You use the collaborative general fund dollars, which is that million 50,000 that you just mentioned. That puts the deficit for the elevator project at 184,000. You use, and then there's also a commitment of 250,000 dollars out of the, the collaborative funds for the restructuring plan that adds a department head and changes, changes Steve's function a little bit and, and adds a department head from, from an existing position. Rounds that cost over two years is about 250,000 dollars. So that moves the deficit to 434,000, which we could be, we could take out of Cube Cap, which has currently almost a million dollars. We take 434,148 out of that, we square up these projects. So it uses all of the uncommitted ARPA. It uses all of the collaborative general fund dollars. So again, my point in, in putting this together is to demonstrate that it can be done. I think it, it becomes apparent that, for example, some of these other projects, including perhaps the cabling project would come in at less than the estimate. And so then those dollars can replace some of these dollars. But right now, we don't know what we don't know. We don't know which projects are going to come in under budget. We don't know if the elevator, for example, would come in at less than 1.3 million dollars. So if that came in at, at a million dollars, then, or if council says do the new elevator, but not the refurbishment of the existing elevator, then that's, you know, a reduction there. So, so my point in drafting this is to demonstrate that we can do these projects. We can complete them. And over the next two and a half months, we need to make sure that all of the ARPA funds are allocated and that each of these projects that, that council and commissioners agree should be done are actually being done. So the money exists. There may be way more than enough money to do it. But this shows that there is a path to do all those things that, that we've talked about doing.
And what would the cap fund be used for, the 434,148?
It, it, it depends on how you allocate it. So this probably can't be used, so we'd have to do, if we do the 250,000 dollar commitment for the restructuring plan out of, out of the uncommitted collaborative general fund dollars, which we can do, then, then we can use Cube Cap to pay for the elevators. So it, it's by, by aligning it properly. And, and I just, I just had to change this last night because I got a new number for the, for the tower radio project.
So explaining to me, I guess I'm a little confused about the 250,000. So we are not planning to do the, taking that off the table then?
No, it's on the table. It is funded, but we talked to council as they left it in their budget about allowing that to be paid out of the collaborative general fund dollars.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And so that means instead of 150,000, there's only 800,000 left.
So you're putting that back in then?
Putting it back into the.
I just wanted to make sure because we worked too hard to get.
Absolute, no, I, that's the last thing I want to take out. But, but I needed to illustrate it there somehow and maybe I inartfully illustrated it.
As long as it was about clear as mud, but now you explained it, I understand.
That's, that's why I needed to take some time to explain it because if I just passed this out to people, they'd all be scratching their head going, what a knucklehead that guy is.
Cube Cap funds can be used for.
Capital improvement projects.
Which would be the elevator.
The elevator.
And do you think also radio?
If need be, if need be.
So that's flexible. So we get to keep the restructuring plan because Cube Cap is pretty flush. Right? We can keep it with, under this plan that you've drafted.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Keep the restructuring.
Absolutely.
Get 250,000 toward capital improvements, probably elevator. And, and kind of hitting the Cube Cap pretty hard.
It could. And remember, you know, whatever, whatever we talk about, council hasn't seen this yet. So they need to be along and it'll be entirely up to them, for example, as to whether they, they say refurbish the existing elevator or, or not. We're not paying for that this year. So a lot of these things are, these are just throwing things up against the wall to, to demonstrate that we can pay for these if everybody agrees that we should.
And unless the legislature has changed this, I think commissioners next year could replenish the Cube Cap fund. Should you choose to do so? Without councils.
No, we couldn't, couldn't do that for 12 years, but now maybe we could.
Now maybe we could.
Okay. Thank you. Or maybe we could do it before the end of the year. Would you support that?
No. Unless you give me a food beverage tax.
I, I think, I think not.
No.
We can't do open trading without a smoke filled closed door.
Well, I don't smoke, so the smoke is going to have to come from you, Barry.
And I don't close doors.
Okay, so that was simply for discussion purposes. I wanted you guys to see it before council does. I plan on presenting that to them this evening so that, again, every meeting for the next two and a half months, we need to be addressing, are we under contract? Do we have what we need to commit those dollars so that we don't lose any ARPA dollars? And, you know, my goal is for us to lose less than $10. So we'll see, we'll see.
Due to lost revenue guidelines, we can take advantage of lost revenue so we don't lose revenue.
Is there a master list somewhere?
Of.
Just what you said, those projects that.
There, there is.
Yep, front that, yeah. Front is helping, back is master list.
There is a list. There is, there's a list of help projects that the county is involved in.
Okay, I think this was in the September 30th.
Projects.
I should have that.
Yeah, make sure you're looking at the right one because it changes every.
We talk about it monthly, but yes, we do have this list that we're tracking. And, you know, the, the wild card is as we complete a project, how much did we come in under, under what we allocated? And, and can we get that recommitted to something else? Which is why we started doing on the, on the, on the Coleman projects that we're setting aside, what was it? 150,000 dollars? There was a number of 10% of, 10% for contingencies. And that money came from, from the fairgrounds allocation from First Bank. Because, because if that, if that exceeds the amount of money we have available in ARPA, it needs to, it needs to come from some other source. So we, we need to continue doing that and we need to reallocate. So there are projects that we want to do that aren't on this list. We need to make sure that we reallocate funds and we can actually commit them before the end of this year. So I'm, I'm providing you with updates as, as much as I can. As you have questions, don't hesitate to bring those up to either me or Beth or Steve.
Yeah, um, assuming this draft went into effect, what would the cap balance be in Cube Cap?
Roughly 500,000.
Okay. Which is still pretty healthy.
Not as healthy as it would have been, could have been.
Well, I mean, ARPA has been, you know, has been the source of many capital improvements.
Yes, it has.
Let's face it.
Absolutely.
Well, as you know, I had hoped we could have projects out of ARPA money that would more directly benefit the community rather than county projects. Benefit county capital improvements.
Which directly benefit the community.
You know, or indirectly benefits the community rather than so directly benefits the community, but.
I would argue that point, but I understand.
The check mark in black means that what?
It's done. It's done.
It's committed.
It's done. It's completed.
Yeah.
Paintful.
Children are playing in the.
Exactly.
But semantics aside, I mean, they, they have gone directly to build county projects or buy lots and lots of vehicles for the sheriff and the highway. Okay? They have, they have gone for county insured projects and vehicles. Okay?
In camp, yes.
It, rather than not, not for projects or contributing to homeless shelters for people and animals. Now, what this would do then would leave Dr. Stacy Kostya, who's in the midst, I hope, of doing an animal study that, um, or may I say completing an animal study on the local level without any kind of foreseeable budget to fund any recommendations that she might come up with to resolve what she finds needs resolving.
I disagree with you again, but.
I mean, because other counties have spent millions of ARPA dollars on animal welfare.
And I would agree that we are not going to spend millions of dollars on animal welfare of ARPA dollars.
Well, I mean, multiple counties have spent multiple millions. Uh, in most cases, it's less than a million, but ARPA dollars have really improved the animal well-being in other counties.
And I think they're doing that here too.
They are?
I believe so. We're moving in that direction.
Can you elaborate?
We have hired Dr. Kostya because she's, she's working. There's still money available to put some things in place before the end of the year. We have doubled the, the budget for going forward.
Stop, what budget?
Our budget, our general fund budget. We've gone from 50,000 to 100,000, assuming council approves it tonight.
Okay. I mean, the commissioners haven't given Dr. Kostya a working budget.
Other than to bring us recommendations of the roughly 25,000 dollars that's, that's still available under ARPA commitments.
But we will have ongoing expense for animal control.
Correct.
I mean, so it's, it's not like she's got 100,000 dollars at her disposal to make. And 50,000 dollars is not sufficient to make any significant capital improvements in.
For a capital improvement.
What kind of improvement can you imagine 50,000 dollars could? Because we, given what healthy animals has cost us, you don't anticipate healthy animals, you know, forecasting leaving close to 100,000 dollars for animal well-being. Much of that would be for.
It's not for them.
Animal control. Much of the 100,000 dollars will go for ongoing animal, you know, what we've experienced in the past. It may be 40,000, it may be 55,000, but we don't know. As you know, I had hoped that we would be able to spend more, that we would be able to earmark some ARPA dollars for making. That we would be able to earmark some ARPA dollars for making improvements in our animal well-being.
I know, you had hoped that. I don't see any indication that you've convinced council that that should happen.
Well, certainly they would not be listening to the voices of Wayne County residents who certainly voiced concern about how Wayne County treats animals in need. I mean, we always said, you said quite clearly, and I think honestly, that the ARPA dollars, the HELP money, was going to listen to those deciding... Making the decisions, listen to the voices of the people. And if we only part with $50,000 for animal studies, that's not going to trickle down to benefit the well-being.
The HELP money is still committed in the way that the HELP money was committed. They're going to do everything that was outlined in the HELP program. Committed and completed by the end of this year.
Well, the HELP money was to do the study. The ARPA money was to actually do something for which the study called for.
The HELP money does far more than animal welfare.
Well, yeah, $50,000 out of millions. But, you know, to drain every dime into county projects is...
I understand that you are not happy with how this has gone. Do you understand?
Well, I'm not happy because the voices of the people would not be happy. I think we have to listen to our citizens and our taxpayers because ARPA ultimately is tax money.
And we are doing more than has been done in the previous decades.
Oh, a lot of study.
Right.
Now we've identified how serious the problem is.
That's how you choose to look at it.
Why, studying the animal problem is not really resolving it.
Is there anything else?
Yes, I think we could consider rating the Cube Cap balance more heavily than rating the ARPA balance.
Because you have supported over the years keeping that Cube Cap balance so healthy. Understand?
No, I have said it was certainly healthy enough to not gouge the taxpayer even more fully.
I hear what you're saying.
With a healthy balance.
All right. Anything else? Bobby? Got everything? Anything from the auditor's office? All right. Brad, anything?
Good.
All right. We're adjourned.